Good evening and welcome to Aspen Squirm Night, a 2023 election event brought to you by Grassroots TV, Aspen Public Radio, the Aspen Daily News, and the Aspen Times. I'm Kaya Williams, a reporter with Aspen Public Radio, here along with Andre Salveil, the editor of the Aspen Daily News, and Don Rogers, the editor of the Aspen Times. Tonight's event is supported by a grant from the Aspen Thrift Shop. I'm grateful for their support.
First up tonight, we'll hear from three candidates vying for two available seats on the Aspen City Council. There's one incumbent, Skippy Mezaro, and two newcomers, Bill Guth and Sam Rose. They'll be answering our questions for the next fifty minutes. Then stay tuned at 6:30 PM for our May Oral Squirm Night, which has incumbent Mayor Tori and challenger Tracy Sutton, both vying for the position.
As for voting, if you're a registered Aspen voter, your ballot will go out in the mail of the week of February thirteenth. You can mail your ballot back in or save a stamp and return your ballot in the drop box outside the new City Hall, located next to Real Grand Park in Aspen. And in-person early voting will begin at the Clerk's Office in City Hall near Real Grand Park on February twenty-first. It will be open from eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday through March sixth. On election day, that's Tuesday, March seventh, you can vote in person at City Hall between seven AM and seven PM.
You can check your voter registration and confirm your mailing address through Colorado's Secretary of State. If you'll be out of town, or if you have any questions about the election, you can email elections@aspen.gov or call nine seven zero four two nine two six eight six to get more information. You should also contact the City Clerk's Office if you don't see your ballot in the mailbox by February twenty-first.
So for the next hour, we'll be asking the candidates questions about the relationship between the community and city government. We'll begin with ninety-second opening statements, and we'll end with ninety-second closing statements. For most questions, the candidates will have ninety seconds to answer, and most questions will be addressed to all three candidates. Aspen Times reporter Rick Carroll will be our timer tonight. He'll give a thirty-second warning with a yellow card and a ten-second warning with a red card.
We'd like to hear your perspectives on as many pressing city issues as we can fit into our time, and we tried to fit a lot in here. So for the most part, we'll skip rebuttals in favor of asking you more questions and getting more perspective. But that doesn't mean responding to a candidate is totally off the table. If we see you squirming at your seat and an opponent's answer, we might call on you to share a thirty-second response or rebuttal.
Okay, so we'll start with ninety-second opening statements. Bill, Sam, Skippy, thank you for joining us tonight. We'll draw names out of a hat. Reading my script here, catching up to determine who gets to speak first, and so there's a hat somewhere.
This is, the table is the hat for the purposes of tonight, but when it comes time for closing statements, we'll scramble the order. For most of the questions, I strategized to make sure we ask you equal opportunities to answer in different positions. All right, Bill, you're up first. You have ninety seconds to make your opening statement.
Thanks, Kaya, and Don and Andre for being here and for doing this, and Sam and Skippy, nice to be here with you. My name is Bill Guth. I am forty years old. I've been in Aspen almost thirteen years, my thirteenth year here. I grew up in Toronto mostly, but have lived a lot of places around the world, Tokyo, Las Vegas, New York City, and upstate New York, and met my wife Lisa in Aspen. We're raising three young children here, six years old, four years old, almost two years old. And I've been involved in a variety of businesses in Aspen since moving here, almost all entrepreneurial, where I've, I've sort of brought various businesses, local businesses, to the community. I currently own a title and escrow company called Aspen Title and Escrow. I'm involved in other aspects of real estate and real estate development. And I started a restaurant that you might remember called Hopps Culture quite a few years ago that was on the Hyman Mall. I, I, I sold it right before we had our second child, and it's, it has since sold again, I believe. But it was a casual craft beer restaurant and eatery. And I'm super excited to be a part of this process. I would like to represent a broader spectrum of, of the Aspen community and would really appreciate everyone's support.
Sam, you're up next. Ninety seconds.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for hosting. My opening statement, I feel like this is an introduction, reintroduction for me. I ran two years ago, which felt like a success, just not in the electoral way. So after running for two years, I feel like I need to reintroduce myself. I'm still a volunteer firefighter EMT. I'm still a response advocate. I play in the rec hockey league. But in the last couple of years, I've joined the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've joined the Ninth Judicial District Performance Commission. I did Aspen Three Hundred and Sixty Learn About Your City Government. I finished a master's in finance. So I've just taken great strides to, you know, prepare for this moment. I've met with such a diverse group of people to try to be a true representative of this community. And I'm honestly running for City Council because local government is the greatest place to make tangible, positive change for our community. I hope to be a lifelong Aspenite, and with that, being on City Council means making this community a better place for myself, but everyone else involved in community is everything to me.
Thank you. That leaves you, Skippy.
We don't get to pick out of the hat?
We've got a renegade.
Well, thanks. Thank you guys for all of your prep, and really, thank both of you guys for running and to everyone watching. You know, I really thank you as well. I made a commitment early on in this cycle that my first goal in this election was going to be to move the conversation, and my second goal was going to be to win. I think it could have been easy to kind of say nothing, platitudes and vagaries around the environment and housing, and walk to victory. But in my observation, in my time on council, we are doing a lot to solve our problems. We have a lot more to do, but the architecture of the approaches we're taking to our biggest challenges, housing, the downtown core, traffic, environment, they're responding to conditions from the nineteen eighties, and in some cases in government, the seventeen eighties. They're not going to get us there, and so my campaign is putting forward bold, achievable policy frameworks that can get us where we want to go, and they are not intended as the end, but the beginning of a discussion, because it will take years, if not decades, to fully enact them, and it's in all of our interests to come together to work on them.
Thanks, Skippy.
Okay, time for some questions at last. Some for specific candidates, some for all the candidates, and it says in the script that everyone will get a chance to answer pretty much equally, so we'll see if that works out.
Just tell me to shut up when you need to.
Yeah, time short with our spell checks and spell checks. So Andre's got the first question for you on some city policies that have ruffled feathers in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
I think this is something that started in twenty twenty-one and bled into twenty twenty-two. And this year. Well, no, not so much this year. The City Council voted to pass temporary moratoriums on short-term rental permits and residential development. Sam and Bill, this first question goes to you. Would you have supported the city's moratoriums on residential development and short-term rental permits? Why or why not? Sam, you can go first.
Ninety seconds.
Awesome, thank you. So I did sign the building moratorium petition. I had issues with it because the issue of the building moratorium came up after the COVID year where there was twenty demolition permits issued to it. The average is six, and then when they went down to six, I thought you don't go to the average, you go a little higher than the average. The real issue here I had, other than like construction, was the filling of our landfill, and I'd like to see the filling of our landfill addressed as a serious issue. There are some like carbon capture techniques and other sophisticated technology to help with the landfill filling up. And then as far as the short-term rentals goes, short-term rentals absolutely had to be regulated and taxed at some point. Aspen was a little late to the game on that. But the percentage of taxation was something that was really tough for me because it's on top of the sales and lodging tax, and I did feel like it was unfair to the lodges. It really gave advantage to the hotels, and it took away from the last bastion of like cheap rental options in Aspen. But ultimately, it passed sixty-two, sixty-two to thirty-eight, and I'm happy to see where it goes as far as just where the short-term rental market does and what we can do with that, the taxes generated from that to help improve our community.
Bill, now it's your turn.
Thanks. I most certainly would not have supported those moratoria, and I did not support the moratoria. In fact, the, the first political action of my entire life was in opposition to the residential building, building moratorium, where I, I utilized a process in the City of Aspen Charter called the Citizens Initiated Ordinance, and we gathered almost a thousand signatures and presented those to City Council. Unfortunately, a concurrent lawsuit rendered that effort moot, and, and I was hoping that that conversation would go to the voters, which was the intention of the process. But my, my opposition to, and, and I was paying much more attention, there was a lot of information to digest at once. I was paying much more attention to the residential building moratorium as opposed to the short-term rental subject. But, but both of them, I think, were a failure in process on the City Council's behalf. And the reason why it was a failure in process was because it was combative and, and argumentative instead of collaborative. And so much more could have been accomplished for the community in terms of changes to the land use code by collaborating with vested stakeholders in this community, developers, architects, engineers, land use planners, builders. And, and the results at the end of the day, I believe, would have been substantially better for all of us in Aspen if we had collaborated versus been combative.
Now, Skippy, you voted to pass these moratoriums. And do you think that they helped Aspen or hurt Aspen, or made any difference at all?
Yeah. I mean, first off, in public policy, the reality is from the time we do something, which is just making a decision just starting, to the time when it actually affects people's lives, is measured in years. So I think it will take time to be able to fully realize and understand what the impacts are. But to Sam's point, significant changes to how we do deconstruction and recycling, to how much total refuge could go into the landfill or is able to. We made the most significant changes in a long time to zoning for our number one goal, which is affordable housing, making it available in every zone district, every residential zone district, and doing so by right, a different process, so that, you know, a developer like Bill or others who come in don't have to play the game of sit back and wait for City Hall, because our process is a problem too, and that costs money, and that keeps us from getting the housing that we need. So I think on those and a variety of other things, we made a lot of progress. Was it perfect? No. Are there things in it that I would have done differently? Absolutely. Do I think the process could and should be better? I do. And that's why my campaign has made Central an Office of Government Innovation, so we can fix our process and amend it, because in many cases, we are still using seventeenth-century tools to meet twenty-first century expectations, and that's not a recipe for success.
Real quick, if you don't mind, what would you have done differently?
So I think it starts with something as simple as inviting a group of stakeholders that I at least would easily be able to identify around a table for a lunch and say, here's, here's the problem statement. This is the issue that we believe is facing our community right now. Can you help us come up with some ideas that you would buy into to solve it? And I believe, again, that the results that would come out of that are far superior to where we ended up. And to be clear, where we ended up is a system of allocating demolition allotments in the City of Aspen, six per year, that creates perverse incentives, that disincentivizes people to build more energy-efficient homes, that actually caps our revenue stream on employee housing mitigation dollars, is quite senseless to me, and, and again, has zero buy-in from anybody in the industry. So I think that if a city council were to turn over, maybe that might be the first thing that they were to look at eliminating.
I've got a quick off-script. So sixty-two percent of the voters voted for the STR tax. Do you consider that to be a definitive, like, statement about this is the will of Aspen?
Yeah, I totally respect that, and, and I don't, I'm not opposed to taxation of short-term rentals. I, I, I believe that short-term rentals and short-term rental managers like Skippy have an impact on this community, as do hotel rooms. I, I believe that we should have taken action on short-term rentals a long time ago, and other communities like us around the United States did take action on short-term rentals a long time ago. Compliance on short-term rentals is critical. Nobody wants to live next to a frat house. Nothing against fraternities, but nobody wants to live next to them, right?
Maybe sororities, that's about it.
Yeah, you, you know, I think that's critical to be good neighbors to one another, and, and that comes with compliance and at risk of losing a license. So I think that should have happened a long time ago. I'm not opposed to taxation of short-term rentals. I think the approach was unnecessarily complicated and once again creates perverse incentives, not to follow the rules, not to get a license, to do all sorts of manipulative legal strategies to avoid paying that tax and avoid having to deal with obtaining a license, which may be unobtainable in certain neighborhoods.
Okay, and I would add, it was on a first-come, first-served basis, so with the email system being what it was, and people hiring consulting firms, and the city gang sued over that, now you can't get demolition permit until twenty twenty-four. So there definitely needs to be some reforms with like the demolition permitting system so that it's more equitable and makes more sense.
Okay, let me, let me hop into what I'm supposed to talk about. I'm feeling Kaya's sharp elbow here. So the, the issue of unanimous votes. Speaking of policy, da-da-da. So Bill and Sam, we'll start with Sam this time. What is one unanimous council decision you would have voted differently on?
I feel like I have to go to the building moratorium, and, and the reason for that is honestly, it's just like, you know, I've been told so many times, they don't let perfect be the enemy of good. But like, you know, sometimes an opposition vote says that the broader spectrum of the community is being represented. So like, that four-to-one vote, I think, still would have had the same effect. It still would have passed. But, you know, I talked to some members on City Council that actually agreed with me that six was too low. I won't name names, but, you know, they voted for it because they did not let perfect be the enemy of good. I don't think I would always let perfect be the enemy of good, but there are times and places where I felt like that number was too low. You don't go to the average and you go higher than that. I'm sure I'd have another example, but since we were just talking about that, that's the easiest one to explain.
Let me try and get Bill into thirty seconds with this one.
I'll, I'll pick on the living lab on this one. Just because it's top of mind, but, you know, it's, it's a clear example. I think the biggest failure was not being able to pivot from something that became obvious that was a bad decision. But the decision in the beginning was also a bad decision. There was so little communication with people that would be highly affected. You know, I have a business on Cooper Avenue. Many of my neighboring businesses around would never have thought that was a good idea. I, I don't think public safety experts were, were consulted. I don't think transportation experts were consulted, at least not in my observations, prior to agreeing to do that, and it was just a messy failure.
Got it. Okay, Skippy, you get to answer for it. Yeah.
How do you want to phrase the question?
So are there any votes that were unanimous that you would take back? Or, or you were nudging, but you guys did it a different way, like?
Yeah, I mean, look, with the benefit of hindsight, with the information I have now, would I make different decisions than I made then on a number of things? Sure. And, I mean, you, I mean, I actually don't agree with that one, but I think the Living Lab is a great example. I think our approach to kids first in childcare is another great example. But, you know, in my life, I, you know, I, I really don't believe in regret, right? In my mind, everything is either a success and enjoyment, or it's a learning opportunity. And if you look at, say, the childcare piece, you know, I'm happy to say that after some time and a lot of pain, and, you know, I'm of that age, most of my friends have kids. You know, we have pivoted, using Bill's word, our strategy, and we are now investing in educators and attracting new individuals and training and payment. And we're doing things to support childcare in our community that I don't know any other community that is. Do I wish that the road there was not as bumpy? Yeah, I, I absolutely do.
A question sort of concerning how councils work together. Some of it is we vote differently, some of it was we air our differences, and then we vote in concert, apparently. Do you think conflict in council chambers can stop up progress?
Can stop up?
Stop up progress, like.
Yeah.
So Bill, you're up. You're answering, and you're, you happen to be on my list here, so good.
I believe democracy involves conflict. There's respectful, healthy conflict, but there, it's antithetical to the democratic process to me for that significant amount of unanimity in voting. It's not a small sample set. That's almost an entire year of voting last year was unanimous, I believe, with one exception. That's not healthy. That doesn't, that, that means that significant portions of our community are not being represented at the table. It's impossible for me to fathom the fact that five people who are supposed to represent the full spectrum of Aspen voters are thinking the same way all the time.
Let me go to Skippy.
I would love to. It, it's an observational fallacy. First off, I would say, and I'll let you guys speak for yourselves, but, you know, we all come from a Jewish tradition, and I agree with Bill. I know this keeps coming up, but I, I totally agree with Bill. We cannot avoid controversy for fear of conflict. We do need to have conversations to build connection, and differing opinions within a conversation are not just extremely healthy. I think they're a prerequisite for good decision-making. But if you're not in the meetings and you're not watching what's going on, and you haven't seen, you know, the work sessions or the process to get there, then simply taking the one data point of the seventy-two votes and having that mean that or imply that there was no disagreement along the way is crazy. I mean, we were in a place where we had, you know, multiple concurrent crises going on, right? I mean, we had a public health crisis that you were involved in. We had a social justice crisis going on, an environmental crisis going on, locally housing crisis going on. And so this council decided to do something that I think is quite admirable. We got together and said, we need to solve some problems. So what areas do we have some general agreement in? And can we focus on those to deliver for our community in a time when functional government is an afterthought, if existent at all? And along the way, there was a lot of disagreements. I mean, a project that is in line with what I support is anything, the lumberyard being housing, there's a bunch of stuff in there I don't agree with. And if you'd watched those meetings, you would know that, and you would hear those discussions, but consensus doesn't mean agreement.
Okay, we go to Sam. Sam, what do you think about this?
Understandable and understandable, but sometimes perception is reality. And I, I think we have a responsibility to the constituents, to the community, to like, help them understand the perception that City Council is coming from, because if it is, just, like, five-oh votes aren't like bad alone. It's great to have unanimous decisions in some respect. You do what you think is right. But if you, if you have like a City Council chamber filled with people like angry about something that are constituents, and you're like, we're listening to you, we're listening to you, and then you all vote five-oh, it really doesn't feel like you were listened to, and especially, I don't think the City Council sometimes does a good job of explaining why they didn't do something when they feel like we're, we're listening to you and you just, you know, don't do the living lab. That was, that was a great example I should have come up with the last time, because like, there, there was a, that actually had a three-two vote where they kept it, so at least there was two opposition voices. There needed to be one more to get rid of it. But like, ultimately, you know, perception is reality, and I think as a City Council member, I'd want to make sure that the perception was better received by the community rather than being angry about it.
Can I just, you know?
Can I ask Kaya? No, I, I appreciate that, and, you know, listening does not equal agreement. Listening does not equal agreement. You can listen, you can truly take something in and consider. I mean, I spent hours sitting down with you in the moratorium. I listened. I did bring things back that actually made changes. I read every single one of your emails. It doesn't mean I agree with you on everything. I think that's normal and okay, and if perception is reality, you know, frankly, I've, I've read, you know, all your campaign stuff. I've read your website. I've read your website. I can't find anything on either of your websites that I don't agree with and that our council doesn't agree with. I mean, we're kind of a seven-oh vote in that way. I mean, I just, I just don't, and that's not a bad thing, because we can work together collaboratively, and we are going to have different ideas, and you do bring a lens that I don't have, that I think could be beneficial to us in a number of ways. So, you know, I agree with the, the premise, but the observation and the, the, the end, the end thing that we are presenting on the other side of that five-oh is just not accurate.
No, I understand that. It's just about feeling hurt, that's all.
And I think that's a great point, Sam, to jump to my next question, which, gentlemen, I hope you'll forgive me. I'm about to go off of my own script. I'd like to talk a little bit about diversity and inclusion in the City Council.
This went differently yesterday.
Well, this question might not be going the way you think it is.
Yeah.
Aspen, people who live in Aspen are going to vote for which one of you is going to represent, which two of you are going to represent them in council. But the decisions that happen in Aspen City Hall are affecting people up and down this valley, people who commute into town, people who are part of this community, who may live outside of city limits. How are you going to make sure that underrepresented voices are listened to in City Hall?
And when you say underrepresented, you mean not necessarily in the city, though, like, not our constituents, but still have a?
Could be your constituents. I'm talking about people that maybe aren't the conventional, the stereotypical Aspen voter, of someone who is well-to-do and maybe has a comfortable house or has APCHA housing, someone who is part of our community and is affected by your decisions, but may or may not be able to vote for you.
Yeah, it's a great question, because, you know, we do, as a city, a lot of outreach, and I'm gonna be very political here, we should do more reaching out. And that means like finding the people that feel underrepresented, like, you know, the Living Lab was an example of, they said they did outreach, but a lot of business owners don't have time to like come in and like talk about things, and we should be reaching out, especially if like a certain issue affects certain people, especially that might be underrepresented. And then beyond that, if you're talking about like down-valley people or people that just live outside the city limits, because the city limits are narrow, I think that comes from collaboration with the Board of County Commissioners and then other municipalities beyond to help like collaborate on that. But as far as underrepresented goes, it's, it's all about reaching out to them and understanding like who we think is underrepresented and trying to get them to come to the table, but also going to them.
So, Skippy, I'll throw the question to you next.
Let me have a sip of water. It's a really great question. I mean, just in this campaign, going through my previously supporter list, it's amazing how many people don't live here anymore. And this is a problem we've been trying to solve for back since the next gen days, two thousand fourteen. I often feel like I am as focused on the issue of those living down-valley as here because they are the ones who necessarily our policy has most failed. And so when it comes to housing policy, how can we create a condition where people who love and live and want to live in Aspen? It's not everybody, you know, sixty percent by the surveys. How do we serve them? And so, you know, specific examples at, at APCHA, right? We have begun the process of actively reaching out to the Hispanic community, doing everything bilingualy, reaching down to Glenwood, letting people know that there's low-income units available. And there's a, a variety of other examples of doing that, but it's, it's a real challenge, and we need to think more regionally. We have started and funded the first regional housing authority. You know, Aspen's a signatory to that. We were one of the first funders. So, you know, RRAFT is another great example of how we began to work with other communities to think regionally. And I think those are a good roadmap. We need more of it, and frankly, I agree with everything Sam said.
Bill, were you in a Miffy there?
Yeah, I've spoken. I'll expand on it a little bit, and I've talked a lot about this in, in the events that we've done so far, is, is I hope to bring the perspective of a wider audience than what I believe is currently represented at the council table. than what I believe is currently represented at the council table. And whether that be a second homeowner, whether that be someone who lives just over, outside the city limits, whether that be somebody who commutes from Glenwood, or Rifle, or Newcastle every day, whether it be somebody who comes to visit Aspen once in a lifetime. I think there's some missing perspectives and some missing representation of, of the desires and needs of those people. And I've been, you know, in some of those shoes, and I work with a lot of people that are in those shoes, and I really hope to help represent them, too. That doesn't mean I make them a priority versus Aspen citizens, but I think it's important to consider their perspective and respect their perspective. You know, I think one good example of that is back to the building moratorium. I'm not sure that the, I'll use a generalization here, but I'm not sure that the young architect who recently went out on his own, or her own, after leaving a firm, who's, you know, is basically surviving on one project, was considered in the decision-making process and the pain that that would inflict upon them. So, I would voice that opinion and try to represent, represent and respect that person as well.
And then just a quick follow-up, 30 seconds to respond. Skippy, I'm glad you mentioned Next Gen Committee as well as bilingual communications. What would you guys think of a Latina representative community to work with the city council? Sam, you can go first on this one.
I'd love that. If, if the Latino community, Latinx community felt like that was something that they wanted, and they felt like they're underrepresented, then that'd be a wonderful thing, honestly.
One of the things that we are working on this year is our boards and commissions and the structures. Participation has fallen off, and this is just my view, I don't think we appreciate the horsepower that is on those boards. I don't think their input is as well-integrated into decision-making processes as it should be. I want more direct communication and FaceTime. I want to know in more than minutes, you know, what Sam thinks on P&amp;Z, or what Bill thought on CCLC. And so, yeah, we, we need to make improvements to that, and I, I'm glad we're already doing that work.
Yeah, I would welcome the addition of any type of board that brought a broader community perspective. And to add on to what Skippy said is, I, I believe these citizens' boards need to be further empowered and trusted with their decisions. I, I think that council overrules and strips power from these boards often. That's, that's why I ended up resigning from the CCLC after chairing it for a couple of years. And, you know, another good example, I've tried to volunteer for, to serve on P&amp;Z and HPC, both of which I believe I'm quite qualified for, and was not elected by the council. And there have been empty seats on both of those boards since my applications.
Could I just, I, I realize I unintentionally didn't answer your question directly, but yes, I would absolutely support a Latinx-focused board, and any number of them. I think the more citizen groups that can bring a unique perspective for us to consider within the kaleidoscope of the community, the better.
And Bill, you also kind of skirted the initial question.
No, I did. I answered it very simply, is I, I welcome that. And any other board that I think could be helpful. I mean, Skippy founded Next Gen, which is super admirable, helping to represent an under-40 perspective in the city of Aspen. Maybe there are some things that we are aware of or not aware of that could help council do its job better, and take some of the workload off their plate, to be honest. There's nothing wrong with, with seeking out qualified, respected members of the community, nominating them to serve on these boards, getting their buy-in, and then letting them do their job.
Yeah. And there were 11 of us. It's not just me that founded Next Gen. It's a team effort.
Bill, I'd like to welcome you to the demographic now that you've hit 40.
Thank you. Can you see some of the grays in my hair?
Gets worse from there, buddy.
This is city council-induced stress brace, by the way.
I'm gonna ask Madam Chairman if I can relinquish my, my next available time to Andre. He's been, been squirming next to me, so.
Not so much.
Not so much, I know.
The next question relates to achievements. Let's talk about what has and hasn't happened yet in city hall. Bill and Sam, what has the current council not accomplished that you'd prioritize in your first 90 days in office? Bill, you can go first.
Yeah, for me, there's a couple things that I would work on. I've, I've highlighted them all in my website, you know, community workforce housing, affordable food and beverage and retail, and locally-owned retail, and the entrance to Aspen and traffic. And I think, I think the last one sort of highlights the inaction the best. Because I believe that there is so much work that could be done on the entrance to Aspen and traffic, at least in the interim, that could improve on everyone's quality of life. I mean, traffic is so bad, and it's so impactful to the quality of life of, of our community, which includes those living beyond the city limits, and even in Burlingame, which is now in the city limits. And, and there are so many things we could be trying inexpensively, that at least we could say we're trying to improve upon the situation, instead of, you know, dividing the community amongst a solution that we know isn't liked by a lot of people. And that, that's the preferred alternative that I'm referring to.
Real quick, before we go to Sam, what could we do right away?
Well, I have a few ideas on traffic flow. First of all, I'd like to bring in an international or national expert on traffic flow, and work directly with them as a council, and, and provide some ideas to them, to run by them. I don't proclaim to be a traffic engineer myself, but one great example, I, I happen to live near the 8th Street bus stop, and that bus stop has a pedestrian crossing that's on demand. And every single time I use this, which is frequently, I am stopping a state highway instantly on demand. To me, that's preposterous, and I use it frequently. So, you know, why wouldn't we implement a timed pedestrian crossing, group pedestrians together, help the traffic continue to flow in and out of town? And what could that possibly cost to implement, or test? It can't be very much money.
Sam, your turn.
Yeah, so as far as priorities go, I, I want to recognize that, like, you join city council, but it's a collaboration, and you actually make a list of priorities with the other council members to actually accomplish anything. But a lot of these things are already on that list. In order, the permitting process in town, I, I think is anti-local. I'd like to see the permitting process be less, on the residential and commercial side, you know, the empty spaces installed projects in town could be community spaces, or they at least could be like, a commercial tax revenue that actually benefits the community. It's about like, achieving that net positive. So, working on the permitting process, I have some ideas about that. Continuing to add more childcare, that's something the city has vehemently been working on, and something that, you know, families are like the backbone, lifeblood of any community. So, when we have more childcare, we have more like, better quality of life, and allow both parents to be able to work. That's a huge deal to me. Affordable housing, obviously, that's a big deal as well, as far as just, you know, it's always a big deal, but it, it's one of those things that we need to push forward, as far as just like, how are we gonna pay for the lumberyard? Where else can we find housing projects? How can we do this in a development-neutral way? Those sort of thing, you know, using existing infrastructure. Affordable food and beverage, you know, I was just at the work session the other night, we're talking about what we're gonna do with the armory, what we're gonna do with the old powerhouse. The armory could be a food, like a food hall. That's something that's been discussed. And the last one is the entrance to Aspen, and I have more details, but, you know, I respect the time. But all those need to be pushed forward in a meaningful way.
So, Skippy, I'm gonna kind of rephrase this for you.
I loved it that way.
What did you not accomplish in your term, this, this being your first term, that will be your priority in your first 90 days in office, if you are re-elected?
Got it. Well, first, I just want to say, either Bill or Sam, or both, will be in very good company, because all five things that you guys mentioned, we're currently working on. We're focused on affordable business through comdev as a primary goal. We're exploring the armory. The ETA has obviously been deep into the conversation, and there's a lot of support, not necessarily mine, on council. Childcare remains a top goal. Affordable housing is always top. So, I think you'll be in good company there. You know, my campaign is, is, like I said, pushing things that this council either hasn't considered or doesn't support. There's three in particular. I want to create a new development-neutral model for delivering housing without new growth, and that's in addition to all the work we're doing under our 14-point strategic plan, which is all new, and I'm super proud of. Two, I want to open and fund an Office of Government Innovation to improve the process we've all been talking around, which is the sort of root commonality of decisions gone poorly, is the systems and process we use to deliver them. And then three, I want to transition to a people-first core. So, we can have a local business district, bring back the commons. And so, all three of those things are new. Realistically, first 90 days, assuming that I would have support from either of these guys, and the community has made a statement through my election, I think that funding and starting the Office of Government Innovation would be a start, and moving up the development-neutral model in the work plan is possible, but I would not expect to see a result at your doorsteps in 90 days.
Thank you all. Now, in the interest of time, and keeping grassroots happy as well, we are gonna skip forward quite a bit, because I want to give you all the opportunity to make your closing statements.
We're there already.
We're going to re-scramble the order using my very scientific math, and Sam, you'll go first. You'll have 90 seconds to make your closing statement.
Oh, we're already at closing statements.
Boom, yeah.
Council meetings do not feel this short.
And so, in the interest of that, if we have any...
If you want to vote against what we're doing, you're happy.
So, as far as closing statements go, I, you know, we all sit up here, we all care deeply about this community. That's not something that distinguishes us. But as far as, just like, I go, the, the research and time I put into this moment, as far as just contributing to the community and trying to be prepared for this moment, reading the land use code, the Aspen Area Community Plan, the Mobility Lab, reading books like Tasman Back by Peggy Clifford, or Those Were the Days by Jill Shealy, I mean, they've all been inspiration. They've all really led me to be prepared for this moment. I've talked to a diverse group of people, and I, you know, I embrace Aspen, but we talked about how we can do better, and we can, you know, Aspen, the city council is prioritizing some of these things, and I'd like to be on city council and help push these forward, be a facilitator, be a true representative of this community, actually feel like the community is heard, and actually feel like we're facilitating positive change on all the topics we talked about tonight and more. I hope I earn your vote, and you can learn more about me at samrosforaspen.com. I encourage you to reach out.
Awesome. Thank you. Now, Skippy?
Thank you for reminding me about the website. I'll just start there. It's skippyforaspen.com if you want to go on before I forget. I actually just want to say thank you to you guys. I really, truly respect your willingness to jump in. It takes action. It's not easy. And even though we didn't agree on the moratorium, I really respected you jumping in and doing the work. And so, my invitation really to the community is to do the same. We cannot continue to silo ourselves, shame-blame and point fingers and complain about the good old days, while enacting the same solutions hoping for a different result. And my campaign is the only one putting out truly different architecture for doing this. And they're not perfect, and you're not gonna like all of them. And that's okay. That's kind of the point. The point is we start a conversation to actually do something different. And I approached this campaign and after, as I have every day in office, with an open heart and an open mind, answering every email, listening to every person, Bill or otherwise, and whoever's elected, I look forward to serving with you. Or, I look forward to being your best cheerleader, if I'm not there, because the community is really what this is about.
Bill, it's your turn now.
I'll start with the website, too, since that's a good idea. Thanks, Sam. BillForAspen.com. You know, again, I'm asking for the community's support. I, I believe that I bring a broad set of experience in life, both business and life and family. I know what it's like to raise a young family in Aspen. I care deeply about Aspen. I would like to enhance the experience of living in, doing business in, and visiting Aspen. I do not want to change Aspen, because I love it. I love it as it is. I will love it even better if we can improve upon some of the issues facing our community right now. And I, I know that I can deliver tangible results as quickly as possible for our community. I mean, it's a bureaucratic process, so it will never be as efficient as the private sector, and I acknowledge that. But, you know, I have a track record of getting things done, and getting them done quickly and effectively. And I, I, I think that the community needs that right now, and it would be my honor to do it.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for your time this evening. We do have about 90 seconds on the clock, and these answers shouldn't take you too long. Who are you voting for in this election besides yourself? Bill, you can go first.
Or just on council, or both?
Council and mayor.
So, I'll start with mayor. I, I would like to see a different voice represented at the, at the head of our leadership table in the city of Aspen. So, I'm gonna support Tracy Sutton. I found her to be thoughtful and practical, deeply cares about Aspen, long-track record here. And, you know, Tori has, has done a wonderful job for this community, but I think it's time for a change there. So, I, I will be supporting Tracy. And I will also be voting for Sam. I think that he brings a, a really practical, thoughtful, caring perspective to the table, and appreciate all of Skippy's service. But I think it's time for practical situations, practical solutions and less ideology.
Tori and I have very different leadership styles. We joke about that a lot, but we've gotten a lot done in the last year and a half, so the way he's doing it is working, and I'm gonna vote for him. I have not made up my mind yet here. I think having a developer perspective could be extremely beneficial in certain circumstances, but only if that perspective is applied to the broad community interest, and not to the industry or personal financial interest. And I don't know, I don't know if that's true yet, and I'm trying to find out. For Sam, I, I want to know more about the details. I really appreciated on the first go-around how quick of a study you were, and your commitment, and your volunteerism to this town, I think is amazing. But I still don't really know what you would do if you were there. And so, I'm, I'm genuinely open to both, and that's what I'm telling everyone who asks.
Sam, who are you voting for?
Very diplomatic answer. You know, Skippy endorsed me the last election around. Bill has supported me this time, obviously. And I think it's really important, I understand why you asked the question, but I think it's really important to, you know, go into whatever next council with like, being able to work with anyone. I have great relations with everyone. I feel like I am the middle sometimes between Skippy and Bill, and everyone's always wondering what side I'm on. Honestly, I would like my actions to speak louder than words, and I'd like my platform to stand up for itself.
Sam has a future in national politics, so that makes one of us.
What about the mayor's race?
Same deal, as far as, you know, I, I have a great relationship with Tracy. She's really, you know, I, I just met her actually, like, in the last month. She's a really wonderful woman who is very intelligent, comes from that, like, very business-minded attitude. And then Tori, I mean, like, he, he's been a great facilitator and leader of the city for the last four years. So, I'd be happy to work with either of them at this point. But, you know, once again, my actions are gonna speak louder than words, and I think my platform is gonna, you know, stand on its own in my track record, so.
Sam for Congress.
All right, fine. So, so two of you have deeply frustrated this end of the table.
But we'll allow it, and we're out of time. That matters. Aspen City Council Squirm Night, thank you all for indulging some squirmy questions, and for running for council for your commitment to the community. We know this isn't easy, probably harder, given that we're keeping you to the clock. But thank you all, and a special thanks to the Aspen Thrift Shop for supporting this broadcast tonight. We'll have the mayoral candidates in the hot seat in a little less than 10 minutes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, guys. Cool, thanks, guys.
That was great.
Yeah, thank you. We're letting the incumbent make the first opening statement and the challenger, that's you, will get to make the first closing statement.
Okay.
So Tori, off we go.
Well, thanks a lot. Of course, I would say ladies first, but follow the directions I'm getting at the table.
For a change, journalists telling you what to do. I love it.
Let's not make a habit of it. First of all, thank you to Aspen for the tradition of Squirm Night. Let's make it squirmy. I want to thank all the media outlets that are bringing this to you and covering it as well, especially Grassroots TV. Thank you to the supporters that have already reached out to me and gotten in touch, volunteered, and already donated to the campaign.
Sorry.
And thank you to the viewers. Biggest message here is please vote. Tell your friends to vote. And before we go on, I just also want to say immediately following Squirm Night, whether you're watching here or you're at home, join us at Michola. We're going to have an après Squirm Night party. That includes you, Tracy. Join us, please. This election is about choosing a sustainable quality of life, a livable Aspen, and building community over selling out our mountain ski town values. The stronger our community, the more successful our resort economy. I'll say that again. The stronger our community, the more successful our resort economy. The last few years were a very busy time in Aspen and the world. Our council was presented with a lot of challenges and changing conditions. We celebrated a lot of successes and we learned from some missteps. In my four years of mayor, we have hired a city manager, moved into a new city hall, made organizational improvements. We navigated a global pandemic, supported mental health and wellness, made important land use code revisions, regulated short-term rentals, helped stabilize early childcare, made more funds available for arts and culture in our community, supported more local business, updated environmental goals, and created a housing strategic plan and more. Ultimately, I have been standing up for Aspen and our community health, sustainability, and prosperity. I ask for your vote for two more years. Thank you.
Tracy, it's over to you.
First of all, I want to thank Aspen Public Radio, Grassroots, Aspen Times, the Aspen Daily News, and of course, you guys too for moderating. Obviously, this is my first foray into the tradition of Squirm Night, so I'm looking forward to it. I did my little homework. And then you guys bummed me out because there's no trivia questions, but that's okay.
Next time, yeah.
I want to thank everybody that I have, you know, I've spoke to about, that's helped me about my campaign effort. You know, I have met with a lot of people. I've gotten a lot of support. And it's really been a powerful experience. So I'm really looking forward to this experience and moving forward. As the only person running against our current mayor, I represent a different, you know, I'm also the only woman running in this election. I also, I know I represent a broad coalition of people when I call for change, and I'm optimistic about our chances, and I'm grateful for the support. As many of you know, I'm running for mayor because I'm a stickler for good decision-making. As a local business owner and in my line of work, you can't accomplish anything if you don't make smart, realistic choices. I promise to put all of our decisions through a rigorous process of community input and discussion. That's something that I found lacking and why I put my hat into the ring to run for mayor. You know, I'm going to fight to take care of our existing absentee residents, manage traffic, not only the entrance to Aspen, also in the West End and particularly by my office, which is right by Michola, which is a dangerous intersection. And I also want to promote affordable dining options that don't harm our existing eateries, grow our workhouse, housing with responsible, in a responsible and affordable way. We need leaders with realistic, informed idea of this community and its needs. As a longtime community member and a successful professional, I will make sure the city government listens to reason.
Awesome. Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
And now we're onto some questions. I hope you're ready to squirm. You'll have 90 seconds to respond. And since we have two candidates here, unfortunately, we weren't able to do this with the city council, but we'll have the opportunity for rebuttals. So whoever answers first will be able to answer first, and they'll also get the opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal after the other person answers. We'll alternate who answers first as well. And Andres, off with the first question.
Tracy, you'll answer first on this question?
Okay.
And it relates to the entrance to Aspen. Explain your understanding of the city's preferred alternative to the entrance to Aspen. What reasonable options do you think the city has? And what do you think the city should do to address the entrance to Aspen?
Okay. Well, first of all, I don't like the way that they're taking away the open space for the preferred alternative. I don't think that it makes a lot of sense when you still, in an emergency situation, you're still basically having one way in and one way out. I really like the idea that I've heard, I think with technology, the way that it is. And I also feel like the building materials have changed, that obviously that bridge has got to be replaced and it needs to be done quickly. It's been quite some time that we've been talking about it since I first moved here, you know, 37 years ago. And I was a commuter then, and it's always been talked about. And that's one of the things where we can throw a building moratorium or a short-term rental moratorium in 24 hours, but we've been talking about this bridge for many years and something needs to be done now. So what I would do is, you know, the first thing, one of the first things I would do is have a practical discussion with people that know what they're talking about and get a different angle on it. Because we know that that's going to be one of the biggest issues in the upcoming future.
Okay, Tori, you're up.
Well, first of all, I'd say I wouldn't call it the city's preferred alternative. This is something that was voted on by Aspen. It goes back to a legacy looking into light rail from here to Glenwood and the like. So it's not really the city's preferred alternative, or the city's plan for that matter. Right now, what we're doing is going out for public information and outreach. This is, was a vote that is standing by the people of Aspen, not the city government. So that's just the basis of where we are. I'm being very careful these days not to share just what I think my personal choice for this is. Because my job as mayor is to lead a process that gets our community to the best solution. The last vote that happened on this entrance to Aspen or Newcastle Creek Bridge was about a 51 to 49 vote, very close in our community. What we need going forward is to get our community to rally behind whatever solution our community prefers. But we need more support for it than just a 50-50 split. So my primary job right now, and we have a meeting coming up February 13th, that's this Monday, that's going to tell us all a lot about the next steps. Again, my job as mayor is to run an open, transparent process that gets this community the best result it can. And that's my intention.
Tracy, rebuttal?
My question to that would be, if it's the preferred alternative, and that seems to be the only choice we have now. So what else is down that pipe that we're going to have to choose from?
We will see our options on Monday. You know, I just sent an email today for clarifying questions. We don't know all the facts. That's why we've gone through an extensive month-long process to get information for our public so they can understand what we're going to do. One question today was the existing Castle Creek Bridge. Does it need to be replaced regardless? Can it be structurally reinforced? I don't know the answer to that. In the plans that are, the preferred alternative, by the way, is, it's not a nickname. It is the actual name for the plan that resides within the Record of Decision. So very clever to name it the preferred alternative, but don't let it, don't misread it. You know, the Record of Decision, Preferred Alternative were plans that were developed around criteria that our community set forth. This is a complicated process, but once again, I have a lot of confidence in my ability to lead us through this process to get to a great solution.
So lead through the process. What does that look like?
We need to know what our options are. You know, people don't understand right now what is even approved in the preferred alternative. I could look at Tracy right now and say, Tracy, do you know exactly what's approved in the preferred alternative?
And I can say no.
So there's your trivia question, for starters.
As most people. People have different perceptions about whether it's four lanes of traffic, whether it's two lanes of transit, whether... So anyway, we need to get that cleared up on Monday. That's number one. We're going to get all the information to everybody, so we're all playing with the same deck of cards. And then I believe we're going to be able to put on opportunities for our community. I'll give you an example. I've heard, not just to talk about a new bridge or a new alignment, I've heard from our community that there are other elements to the Record of Decision that could be revisited. Well, we don't even understand, from CDOT's perspective, what that entails. We'll know more Monday.
Tracy, how would you, I'm sorry, how would you lead this process?
Well, first of all, I would have to agree. I'll have to, you know, mine will be at the work session on Monday.
Not voting together again. We just went through that with the council.
No, I will be there. You know, I've been sitting in on all the county work sessions, or, I'm sorry, city work sessions and the city council meetings recently, and I will definitely be there so that I can give a, obviously, get more information that I'm not privy to at this point.
So, yeah, I'm just thinking about like, you see Mayor Tora and you're like, that's not the way to run a city. So how do you run the city?
You know, how I run the city is, first of all, I'm listening to the people whose homes are going to be affected, because I have had conversations with them already. You know, no one wants to lose their house over it. I don't think that it's a practical plan personally, so I think that we need to talk to, you know, address the safety issues of it, first of all. And also, you know, you can't have one way in and one way out of town, no matter which way you go about it. So that would be my first choice.
Got it. I think I'm up. So this has to do with the dreaded STR tax and residential development moratorium. So we may see some differences here. So Tori, this question goes to you. Late in 2021, you voted to pass the City of Aspen's temporary moratoriums on short-term rental permits and residential development. Do you think the moratoriums helped Aspen, hurt Aspen, kind of like, well, we voted, didn't really change anything?
I think it most definitely helped Aspen. Number one, it was great to just get on a level playing field and have a conversation without some of the pressures of SNAP development. And that's really what it was. You know, none of us like using tools like that. But when it comes to the progress of our community and the safeguards for our community, I think it's very much warranted. For me, the building application moratorium came down to really one major issue for me. And that was the action that we did about maintaining Main Street for commercial and affordable housing usage and not letting it sell out to the residential uses that we've seen dominating the real estate market and dominating the development pattern in our community. A development pattern that goes against the Aspen Area Community Plan and our goals and our values in our community. So, you know, if we didn't do a moratorium there, you would have seen properties on Main Street snapped up because they're large envelopes, they're large buildings. You would have seen them purchased in the frenzy of residential real estate that happened over the last two years if we'd gone through a normal process. So for that reason alone, I supported that. When it came to the STRs, boy, we have seen the impacts of short-term rentals devastating some communities. Taking a pause on that, getting together with our community, finding out what direction they want to go and listening to them on STRs is what helped guide us to the best solution that we've come to. You know, I didn't agree with everything in the STR regulations that we passed through. But I do know that they were a positive step forward for our community, for Aspen as both a hometown as well as a worldwide destination resort. What we've done is we've brought balance to this situation. And I also believe that we're going to move forward and make changes and amendments as we see fit for the best of our community.
Okay. Well, I'm going to guess Tracy has a different point of view.
Absolutely, I do.
So we'll ask, you know, if you were in the mayor's seat, would you have supported the city's moratorium on residential development and short-term rental permits? And of course, the why and why not? And I feel like I wouldn't have to ask this because you're going to tell us.
Sure, we have two minutes before we go.
Sure, yeah. We have two minutes.
Okay. First of all, I thought both moratoriums were very short-sighted. I don't think that they were, you know, obviously, it was proven that they weren't announced properly. I think that it was a disadvantage. I mean, first of all, I thought the idea of the moratorium was really short-sighted. You put a lot of people, a lot of industries into a position where they had to make decisions, no matter who it was, whether it was homeowners or second homeowners. I just don't like the way it was handled. I thought it was not properly thought out, and I don't think, to this day, I don't think it was properly handled. That doesn't, with that being said, I don't, I'm not saying that there weren't changes that I disagree with. I mean, obviously, we all know that this is an industry I'm very familiar with. I think that they were very short-sighted in the fact that they didn't think that process through.
Do you think they helped?
No, I don't. I don't think they helped. Well, it depends who they helped. I mean, I also recognize that there are problem short-term rentals out there. First of all, I think they should be regulated. I think that there should be limits to them. I think that there are certain elements in short-term rentals where the best side of it's not there. And I live across the street from one. I understand it. So you do have the parking. So I think that great strides were made with that. I think that, I think what I was most disappointed, and one of the reasons why I started paying attention to the city council and everything else, was because of the fact that there were several of us that were on the stakeholders meeting that met every two weeks with city, you know, with the city. And they didn't, it was really, nobody listened to people from the lodging community, hotels or anything about how these things operated.
Red card.
And our recommendations. So the fact that we weren't listened to makes me feel that the rest of the community hasn't been listened to.
I should say too, apologies to Rick, but I'm blind past Tori, so. I'm flashing things and I got to rely on...
I'm just waiting for somebody to kick me under the table and maybe just quit talking. So I'm sorry.
Okay, I hand this over to Kyle.
I'll take a 30-second rebuttal though.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Tori, you can offer a rebuttal if you want.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate that. You know, Tracy in her opening remarks said something about in her business, it relies on making smart real estate choices. That's not what a full community is about. You know, we have got to have balance of community and resort. And that means when it comes to short-term rentals, the impacts of short-term rentals are felt in our community like they are anywhere else. To me, this comes down to a question of profit over people. And I'm sorry, I'm people over profit. You know, in a lot of ways, Tracy alludes to out-of-town interests dictating our community policies. I don't think that's the right way to go. I think that we do need to maintain control in our community, and I think that a lot of what we did are just that, to strengthen our community. And I, and, oh, and by the way, talk about public input. We heard your input at all of those focus meetings. We heard the input from our citizen surveys, and that's why we came out with some of the moderate legislature that we did from that. Our community survey actually said that our community supported a higher, a 13.1% tax on short-term rentals. We brought that down. We went moderate and medium with that. And that's a result of listening to our community.
Tracy, you look like you're squirming there.
I'm not really squirming. I'd like to say something. First of all...
No punching is allowed, by the way.
Oh, no, no, not that. I would like to say one thing, though. When we did, when you did have the open house, I only saw one city council member there. I did not see you there. And, you know, I don't want this to be about short-term rentals. That is what got me interested to pay more attention about things that were happening. But because that's, and I certainly do not put profit over people, we're supporting an entire valley of people with some of these short-term rentals. Secondly, I'm a member of Rent Responsibly, so I've done, you know, I've been part of the studies where other, where, you know, that, yes, we were the last part of it, but I did encourage everyone, let's be ahead of it. But Rent Responsibly is a very good system that moderate, you know, they watch every, you know, all the trends through all of the resort communities. So, you know, it's not that I am putting profit over people, and I really don't appreciate that remark. I think that what I really want to say is we need to back off the short-term rental conversation and look at the fact where you said that you heard all of us. But like I said, we all spent two hours every two weeks there, and there was never a city council person there, and there was never one there at the open houses either.
Yep. Turn.
We've got a lot of questions here, but we'll let you continue these conversations. We're going to stay in the neighborhood of homes and development as well as people here. It probably isn't a surprising or revelatory suggestion to say that Aspen probably has more demand for affordable housing than there is available supply. But I want to know what you'd like to do about it. Can we build our way out of the problem? Can we legislate our way out of the problem? And do you see the current supply and demand as a problem at all? Tori, you went first on this last one, so Tracy, it's up to you.
Okay. I do believe that there is going to, you know, first of all, it's a tragedy that we lost Centennial. And it's a tragedy that we lost it again, where we couldn't, you know, control the rights to it. So that is really a concern to me because I live in that neighborhood. I also, I don't live in employee housing, but I'm about to lose mine, so I'm still looking, you know? I haven't been able to get there yet. So I think that we need to really take a hard look at the current options that we have that need to be done. I do think that this is going to be problematic with the lumberyard. I don't think, I don't see that realistic as numbers come through. But I think there's many opportunities to keep the people in town and work on what we already have in place.
So would you err then on the side of legislation over building more?
I would.
Right. Tori, over to you.
It's going to take everything we got. You'd be foolish to think that you could do one or the other and get to any goals for our community that's going to be in the best interest. Some of the best work we've done over the last couple of years has been the development of the Strategic Housing Plan. That gets us all on the same page, literally, to know what our opportunities and our options are. I don't know if you've been through that or not. I suggest that you take a good look at it because it'll give you some of the insights into what the possibilities are. We are all interested in non-development-based opportunities. But the lumberyard, probably the last opportunity we have for this kind of impactful housing. And it needs to be done right. And again, I didn't agree with everything in it, but it is the best move for our community, and we'll make it good for our community. I am concerned. This is an issue for our community. It's an issue for our region. I'm concerned for everybody, you know, all levels of employees in all sectors. And that's including the over 900 real estate brokers that we have living in our valley and the thousands of construction and managers and project managers that we have living in our valley. These are all people, the professionals that we have living in our valley that are struggling to find upper-end valley housing. We need to address it for all members of our community.
Tracy?
I concur that we need to address it with all members of our community. I think it's very sad that a lot of people that have business in town, businesses in town have to commute to operate them. And it's a big part of our economy.
With both, I'll bounce this next question over to Andres.
Okay. This is a question that really pertains not just to the people of the city, but the county and really the entire valley. And it relates to the Aspen-Picken County Airport. As you probably both know, there's been a process that's been going on here for a few years in which arguably, county officials and airport officials are pushing forward with a major transformation of the airport. And one of the projects that would be involved with that is designed to allow much larger jets to land here, both commercial and private jets. There are many throughout the valley who favor a new terminal building. A lot of people agree that we need a new terminal, but not the airside improvements that would allow the larger aircraft. Many say it would only bring about more growth, more noise, more pollution. So while the county is moving forward toward an end goal, which will be decided probably by the county commissioners, the proposed runway expansion is of great concern to city residents and officials as well. Sorry for the long wind, long winded buildup here. What's your position on the airside improvements that would allow for this expansion and allow for larger aircraft?
I was waiting for Rick to put up the...
Tori, I'm going to let you go first. I know you're familiar with the topic. Do you have an opinion about this?
About the airside?
The airside.
Improvements? I have a lot of concerns about it. I am one of those people that recognizes that we need some terminal improvements without a doubt. But when it comes to the airside, just the idea of, just the idea of larger jets is troubling to me. This is interesting because this goes back a long time for me. One of the first times that I was with Hunter Thompson, this is the topic that he cared to talk about. And he was very clear about the difference between safety improvements versus moving us towards a cruise ship type of tourism. The ability for planes to be nonstop from the East Coast and the like, the commercial side, that is. So I have a lot of concerns. I'm all for making our airport function as well as it can. I want to maintain some of that small mountain town character that it does have. But when it comes to expansion in the name of increased tourism, I have a lot of concerns about that.
Tracy?
You know, I do echo that as well. I think that we really have safety issues. I had some good friends that were actually killed in a plane crash there in bad weather. And I mean, I do remember Rocky Mountain Scareways as well. So I do think that there are some improvements that need to be made, and I think that we need to listen to the community about that because it's a real narrow envelope to fly in there. You know, I think bigger jets is probably not where my, I think the community would want to go, especially since it's so small there. But I think we are in need of a newer terminal, and I think that would be something I would encourage.
What do you think the city could do to weigh in on this situation, even if it's really in the county's hands?
Well, I think that it affects, you know, once again, I think it affects everybody in this entire neighborhood. So you're going to have to get together, you know, I think that you need to have an open conversation with the county and come to, you know, since it affects us all, that there's going to have to be some kind of mutual agreement made.
Tori, do you have any other thoughts?
Yeah, you know, there's other opportunities for improvement out there. Obviously, it's going through an advisory committee. It's going through the county commissioners. We need to be looking at, you know, biodiesel fuels. We need to be looking at appropriate ground transportation. We need to be looking at a lot of other facets that are out at the airport for improvement before I think we should be even entertaining the conversation of the larger aircraft on the airside.
Do you think that all of the community is being heard on this issue currently? Or do you think it's maybe been steered in a certain way?
I think the community's being heard. Again, you know, oftentimes, we talk about the difference between being heard and being listened to. They're being heard. Is some of the input that you're getting, making it to the final product that the county commissioners are seeing, maybe not as effectively as it could be. But these are going to be choices. This is an issue that not everybody is going to agree on. It's going to be a difficult one for the commissioners to find that balance and that compromise. So I'm here to work with them as much as possible.
It's my last shot on my script, so I want to go quick. This is fairly quick. We talked about this in the last debate, but it speaks to, I think, how a mayor works with a council. And this has to do with the unanimous vote complaint. So Tracy, maybe talk about the combination of what you would not vote, an issue that you would not have a unanimous vote with, but also maybe frame into, you know, how you deal with disagreement with the council. I'm going as long as you. And what, how conflict gets settled as you're trying to make progress, your sense of where things get stopped up if there's too much conflict.
Well, I think, first of all, you know, as a good leader, you've got to listen to every side of the story, and you do have to make some unwelcome decisions. And I think that the basis for any good council should be, there should be healthy, healthy, you know, diversions there. I mean, you know, not everybody's going to, you need to respect everybody's opinion, and that way you can change it.
But would you bring it to, we're going to get to consensus? Or would you just be like, this is a political thing and people should be voting different ways?
I think, you know, I think you need to vote the way that you feel the strongest for and represent your community at the same time. I just don't feel that everybody, I just don't believe that everybody can agree on everything all of the time. And it's healthy to have a diverse opinion.
So one issue that you see that would be not a unanimous vote, that they voted unanimous on?
Well, I can definitely say, you know, the building moratorium was one. The short-term rental one was another. The Living Lab would probably be another one as well.
Okay. Tori, I hope you captured what I was trying to say because I don't know if I could repeat it, but.
Yeah, I addressed this actually at a city council meeting a couple of weeks ago about consensus building and about these 5-0 votes. First of all, I think we all should be clear about, you know, what happens in these votes. I, I think the example that was given was something 70 out of 70, something, something, whatever. I mean, I don't even know what that refers to. Does that include when we adjourn our meetings? Because we're all for that.
I object.
Yeah. So, so I don't even know where that example comes from. You know, for me, it's a little bit of kind of national politics bleeding into our local level. My, my friends that work around our area in the same kind of government, whether they're mayors or council members, they strive for consensus building, you know? And what we've done on our council, and I said this a couple of weeks ago, is we've all compromised. We all come to the table with our desires and our opinions and our viewpoints. And the reason we vote 5-0 is because we all give a little bit to meet in the middle where our community sits. So we do listen to all voices, as radical as they may be sometimes. And, you know, sometimes a viewpoint is 180 degrees from you. Sometimes it's not that far. But what we try to do on city council is we try to build to solutions that are in the best interest of our community. And you get a consensus vote when all five agree that that's the motion on the table.
Okay. No further questions. Do you have rebuttal?
No, I don't.
Tori, you've been in the Aspen political game for quite some time, both as a council member and mayor. I did read the article in the paper this morning about where you listed some of your top initiatives or accomplishments.
What paper was that?
I'm not sure.
Sorry.
To be fair, it was his paper.
She shot, sorry.
So we'll have our story.
I know, I know, I know you will.
And you didn't mention something that I remember from the past, which is the, the plastic bottle.
Plastic bag.
The plastic bag.
Plastic bag bottles.
And fee system.
The bottle went to the bag, so forth, whatever. But if you could just list a few of those accomplishments, you can restate them from said article if you would like, or mention some new ones. And conversely, where do you think you could have done a better job over the years or maybe pushed for something else that maybe didn't happen?
I appreciate it. I, you know, I'm not going to be too long-winded on accomplishments. You know, I, I will, just because you referenced the bag ban, you know, I'd go back even before that. The recycling program that we have in Aspen is a result of some work that I did in my first term as a city council member. So I'm extremely proud of that. But to be quite honest, I'm also disappointed that some of our environmental initiatives haven't moved forward faster. So, you know, I, I'll put that in the second column as well. You know, I really wish that we were making more headway on some of our environmental initiatives. I'm extremely proud during my mayor's term, you know, just to have the community voter approval of things like the open space tax, the Wheeler Ret changes that we made to get more money to our community for arts and culture, the STR tax as well, passed with over 60%. In politics, that, that is a good amount of support. You know, the childcare stabilization that we just did recently, the health and human services grants that we've re-upped, almost a million extra dollars to fundamental services in our community. We've been doing some great work. I'm very proud of, of my 20 years of being involved in, in Aspen government. The one obvious one from, from the, the recent years, Living Lab. The way that that was rolled out and implemented was a disappointment to me. And, and, you know, if I could have taken the reins on that one a little bit more, I, I would do that.
Tracy, what is your take on Tori's overall performance as a council member and mayor? And not just in terms of the short-term rental controversy, but some of these other things that he's brought up?
Well, I will tell you, it was really interesting because, you know, this is my first squirm night, so obviously I was a little apprehensive. So I did watch the last two. The last one during COVID was interesting. But I really, I really did, you know, I really, I thought it was really interesting that you and I had a lot of the same things that we talked about from the first year that you did your first mayor campaign. So I thought that was really interesting. And what I find really sad is that a lot of things are not getting done, and they're not getting done in a timely manner. And, and I feel that it's time for someone that can come in and kind of help lead things to move along a little farther and a little more quickly, others that are really important. And that's what I think I'm going to bring to the table is, you know, I'm a businesswoman. I'm used to getting things done. I employ several, you know, a lot of people, and I'm responsible for a lot of people's livelihoods. And I think, like, when we, when we were at the council work session the other day when I was listening to you guys, in five years to do the Armory, when we can shut down two different industries in a day, I just find that those things need to be more quickly so that we have a more effective leadership in, in the coming future.
Really quickly, going back before these recent meetings, what do you think of Tori's performance as a leader in Aspen?
You know, I really don't have an opinion on that. I, I didn't really find anything, I really just didn't really pay a lot of attention to it at that point, and I'm sorry to say that. It was in the recent developments that I really started paying attention to what was going on. And actually, I believe I voted for you.
Thank you.
Tori?
Yeah, just 30 seconds. You know, I, I've been elected to city council and as the mayor of Aspen off of a couple principles, environmentalism, community building, and good governance. You know, since I've been mayor, when I first took office as mayor, we didn't have a city manager. Our city didn't have a mission statement. We were moving to a new city hall. And then guess what? A pandemic came upon us. So Tracy, you're right. I, I had, I had plans for this four years that got interrupted, and we were set back in a lot of areas, but we're making headway. I'm so proud of the list that I gave you earlier about what we've done just in the last two years. But, you know, hopefully, two more years, we can get the rest of those things done. Thank you for that.
So city manager, how would you grade your city manager?
Is that your full question?
That's it.
No, no, long talk.
It's a quickie.
Yeah, it's, it's like a boom-boom.
Yeah, I, I give Sarah a solid B. There's always room for improvement. You know, she brings an amazing skill set to this job. And again, for her, getting settled in, and then a global pandemic hits, as well as the work that she's done around our organization to get our processes and outcomes to be measurable and, and much better, has been phenomenal. Moving facilities to a new city hall, arranging people physically and how they're going to get their work done, she's been amazing at that. I'll tell you, one of the biggest benefits this community got from bringing Sarah Ott on as our city manager was the leadership and decision-making that she showed during a pandemic. With her background, she was very prepared for that, even in an environment and a new position that she was in. She stepped up amazingly, worked with our regional partners very well, even worked with the state extremely well. She is getting better by the day. It's been a pleasure to work with her, and I'm hoping for two more years because we both agree that we're not done, and improvement is what we're all about.
Got it. Tracy, thoughts?
Well, I, I just think it's, I find it very interesting. I mean, I don't know Sarah personally. I do have a meeting that was being set up with her. I will say that I just find it very interesting, once again, that, you know, during all of these meetings and public outreaches and everything, that, you know, I just find it interesting that there wasn't very many city council people there. And is Sarah the one that make, that's making these decisions? You know, all of the decisions? That would be my question.
Tori, we can go back to you on that one.
Thanks. Tracy, welcome to running for mayor. Welcome to paying attention to city council. I appreciate your involvement, and I hope that you stay involved, and you will learn more about how the process works and where we and you can be effective with our local governance.
Speaking of the effectiveness of local governance, earlier this year, some locals started an organization called Aspen Deserves Better as an information resource. If you go to the website, it claims to offer a better process for better government. The group's founders told the Aspen Daily News back in January that it's not meant to be a negative endeavor, but they've also expressed dissatisfaction with how the city has handled some of its high-impact decisions. For instance, the moratoriums that we've talked extensively about tonight. Do you agree with the assessment that Aspen deserves better? And do you think this group will have an influence on how city government functions? Tracy, we'll go to you first on this one.
I do, I do. I just think that it's time that there's, needs to be a fresh voice out there. There needs to be some new blood out there. There needs some more creative-thinking people out there as well. You know, I think things need to, you know, we're coming to a part, you know, we're coming to a lot of different areas in our city now that are really going to, and as you said, with the pandemic, the pandemic, we're almost post-pandemic. There's going to be a lot of changes made, and I think that we need to have people that are more listening to the community, all of the community, making those decisions. So I do agree with Aspen deserves better.
Thank you. Tori?
You know, I've gone to the website. There's definitely a negative tone. It was started by a couple of people that, some of them actually have a part-time occupation or hobby, maybe it is, writing for one of our papers, and has always been kind of that, that type of muckraker. I've reached out to this organization, and I have not gotten a response back from them. I'm open, as I always am. My phone number is 970-948-2023, so if anybody wants to talk with me, please give me a call. You can email me at Tori, it's at aspen.gov. I'm extremely reachable. For this group to not really communicate but put out a campaign like they have, I, I don't know that it's as constructive as it could be. You know, several members of that founding that group do not live in Aspen. So again, you know, Tracy talks about a fresh voice. One of Tracy's signs that's out there right now says, "I can't vote for Tracy, but you can." So I guess that fresh voice is from people who don't live here and can't vote in our elections. You know, I, I am open to dialogue. We work on these issues every day. And if Aspen deserves better, wants to get in touch, I'm all ears. But I think that Aspen knows better.
Tracy, any rebuttal?
Okay, yes, I do have those, a couple of those signs. And, you know, this is in front of one of my friends' and homeowner's houses that live here six months out of the year. And I think that, you know, when we're considering what Aspen means, you know, just because we're longtime locals, let's think about the people that do spend six or eight months of the year here, you know, which is what these people do, you know? And they've supported me, and I appreciate that. And once again, I think it circles back to, you know, we need to take everybody who has their hand in Aspen and consider that because we're not going to have our ecosystem, you know, with people that are, you know, that live here part-time, live here full-time, or they commute all the way from Gladwood.
Awesome, thank you. Well, that wraps up most of our squirm night questions, but we still have a few more things to discuss. This next question from Andre, you'll each have 30 seconds to answer. There shouldn't be too lengthy answers on this, and you will not have the option for a rebuttal.
Tori, who are you voting for in the council election?
You know, normally I, I don't do endorsements. I look for the opportunity to work with anybody that is stepping to the city council table, and I try to keep those relationships as, as open as possible. You know, I, I wish that there were other candidates running. It's interesting that there were eight two years ago and only three this year. You know, from, from watching some of the interview earlier tonight and what I've seen, you know, I know that Skippy Mezaro represents a lot of the values that, that I support as well. So I, I know that that's a candidate that I can trust in. As far as the other two, well, I heard some things tonight that kind of contradict some of the platforms that they've put out. So I'm going to have to redress those candidates and find out where they're really at.
Tracy?
You know, I'm, I will definitely be voting for probably Bill and Sam.
Bill and Sam?
Right. I've known Bill for a long time, and we, you know, work together on different capacities. Sam, I just had the pleasure of meeting recently, and I really like the way that he's put his hard work in there. And I like the things that he stands for. I think Skippy's wonderful as well. But once again, I really think that it's time for, you know, a fresh start.
Okay, a little tiny piece of dynamite potentially, maybe not. Comes in a nice little cover. I'm trying to figure, who's, oh, yeah, Tracy gets to ask this one. So what would you like to ask Tori? You have 30 seconds. Unlike me, I get to talk forever. And then he'll have 90 seconds to respond to you.
Oh, just any question?
Uh huh.
Oh, lovely. Okay. Okay. Tori, what I really would like to ask is, when all of these, when all of these moratoriums were going down and you were asking for public outreach, I was just curious why you never showed up at any of the open houses?
Actually, that's not true. I was at some of the open houses, but the meetings that you were having and the outreach meetings that those were designed for was for your input without electors being in the room for the most part. You know, we.
Can I just interrupt real quick? It was the public open house that I was referring to.
I, I did attend the public open house, so. But some of the other meetings that you attended, and I hope you attended them, were not meant for us to be there, so.
Okay. And Tori, you get to ask Tracy a question.
Tracy, when was the last time and what mountain did you ski?
You know, I haven't skied in about 15 years, and I think the last one was Ashley Ajax. I have really bad, broken ankle and knee, so I can't ski.
Thanks.
Okay, that's quick.
Awesome. Well, thank you both for your time this evening.
Wait, wait, we don't have to be done. We can keep going.
That's what I was just checking. And as a matter of fact, we can, we do have a few minutes left on the clock here, luckily. Apologies to the city council candidates who had to be kind of ushered out as swiftly as we did. Rick's got a question.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, we have a new sheriff in town. We're going to be bringing in a new police chief. What qualities do you all want to see in the new police chief?
And I'll just rephrase that for folks on the mic. Rick's asking what qualities you'd like to see in the next police chief of Aspen.
Who are you asking first?
See.
I start to jump in there.
I think Tori first.
Tori first.
I think the easiest answer and the best way to say this is somebody that understands community policing, somebody that understands our community, somebody that is ready to be connected with all segments of our community. I actually just had the pleasure of meeting with Sheriff Bougleyon the other day on a topic that is something that I really want to focus on in the next two years, which is our teen population and our families. This council did an amazing job with, with stabilizing child, early childhood education. I think it's now, we need to look up the ladder a little bit. You know, you can really measure any community by how, the environment that they raise their kids in. And so I just met with Sheriff Bougleyon the other day about that issue, and I'm looking for a police chief that's going to bring that same kind of community interest and community policing value to the table.
Well, you know, I, I have to agree with that. I mean, it'll be interesting because we are such a special town. You definitely need a, as someone who is community-oriented, and I think those are all very good points that Mayor Tori has brought up. You know, one thing that I have mentioned before is the traffic. And like I said, I'm right across from Mitola, you know where that is, like where he's having his party. And someone is going to get killed on that intersection, and I've reached out to the police on more than one occasion. And just come sit out there and watch. And so I really think, once again, it comes back to, I want somebody who's going to listen to the community, or at least walk the half a block down the street to say, oh, you know, or at least walk the half a block down the street to say, oh, you know, somebody could get killed here if we don't do something about it.
So are you saying the previous police administration was not listening to you?
No, we've been making this, we've been in this location for four years. My window looks out there. I mean, I've had to go out there twice of people that have almost gotten hit and knocked over, not to mention a dog. And I just think that those are items, you know, you need a police chief that's going to listen to all aspects. I mean, we, thank goodness, you know, we do have, we don't have the issues that a big city does, but we have different issues that a small town does.
Real quick, Tori, do you think sometimes the streets of Aspen are unsafe?
Absolutely. I most definitely have been working for a long time to increase pedestrian priority, something I've talked about for a long time. Main Street is one of those corridors. It's not just at Main and Mill, though. But to that end, if you look at some of the improvements that we've put in, for an example of that is the flashers that just went in by Pepke Park. That was, that was actually an addition from my suggestion. I was really happy to see that we put flashers at that intersection, because that signals, hey, you're now in our downtown core, this is a pedestrian core, let's be careful about driving. Anyway, long answer to your question. Absolutely, I want to continue to work for pedestrian priority.
Awesome. Well, thank you all. I think that concludes the question portion with just enough time for closing statements.
I got one more. Of course, it'd come to me.
Yeah, he's grabbing it. See if he can get it out.
Grabbing the mic.
Right ahead.
Let's try and keep these answers to 60 seconds.
Yeah, yeah, one more.
So closing statements, please.
During your term, how would you describe the quote-unquote soul of Aspen? And what is the responsibility of the mayor, the council, the city government in terms of the care and feeding of ensuring what we're calling soul, which I interpret as content among the people who live here? I'll start with Tori, and then I'll let Tracy weigh in.
You know, this is a really interesting question, because it gets to the foundation of what is the role of local government? For me, this is of primary importance. Community building, maintaining character. A lot of this goes back to housing opportunity, keeping people in our community. You know, the strength of our community is going to be the strength of our resort. As we hollow out that bottom end, we become less attractive. We all know that Aspen is a wonderful luxury resort place to be. But when you stop losing that ability for the billionaires, millionaires, celebrities, or whoever you want to be identified as, rubbing elbows with their, and riding a gondola with their server and maybe even their real estate agent, if you will. But if we get rid of that base-level community, we are losing the soul. I will say that I've been asked this question a couple of times, and the soul of Aspen is still alive and well. It's in a couple people that I see in this room, as a matter of fact.
A couple?
A couple.
Only a couple. I'm teasing you.
A couple with a grin, Don.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're getting there, by the way. You be careful, you're going to be one of us. You know, hey, I have great hope for our future. There are people that really care about this town. There are people that want to continue to live, work, and create here. And I'm running for mayor, because I want to, I want to make sure that there's a place for those people here.
Cool. Let's give Tracy...
You know, I agree. I mean, one of the best things I love is offseason, when you're able to go. You know, you go to the grocery store, you know, I miss bar menus, I miss the Winter School Parade, those kind of things. You know, I'd like to see those things come back, because we are a community. I mean, even though we are, I mean, and we've built ourselves as a world-class destination resort for 75 years. I mean, that's what keeps us going, that's where a lot of the money comes from. But you know what? The soul of Aspen is always here. In fact, Skippy and I were just talking about my Tom Benton collection of posters, you know? I miss the Tom Bettons, you know, those kind of things. And, you know, we never really lose that, but I think we all have to take a deep breath and gather it back. We're never going to be back where we were before. But, you know, I think there's still the opportunity to keep Aspen's soul alive.
Okay. Back to your regular programming. Sorry about that.
Well, thank you all for your time this evening. We really appreciate it. Thanks for indulging us. A few extra questions and various moments of conversation, hopefully squirmed a little bit. We'd like to go into two-minute closing statements now. Tracy, as the challenger in this race, you get to go first.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You know, I know Aspen's not an easy place to make our home. You know, when I first got here, I lived in Glenwood, I moved my, worked my way up. I can't get APCHA housing. So I understand it, and I know, you know, so I understand it from all of those levels, you know? I happen to make myself, you know, I am a real estate agent, we all know that, you know? I don't think that's a bad thing. It doesn't mean that I love my city less, you know? I want to see it, you know, I want to be here, I want to employ people, I want to be part of this community without being labeled a real estate agent. You know, I just think that's really unfair. We're one of the biggest, you know, we have one of the biggest land transactions in, you know, in the United States, and that funds the city. So, you know, I'd like to take the emphasis off of that, you know? I really want people to know that I am a lifelong, well, not, well, I'm a lifelong Coloradoan, first of all. I was born in Rifle, because Meker didn't have a hospital, so it doesn't get much more local than that. But I always wanted to live in Aspen, and I really, truly love this town. And I want to see it be a better place for everybody. And, you know, I like that vision of it as well. So that's, you know, I want to thank everybody and my supporters. And first of all, I just want to make sure everybody goes out, and I really would like your vote. Thank you.
Tori?
Thank you. Thank you again to Grassroots. First and free, right? I'm very proud of my four years in office. I'm very optimistic about the direction Aspen is heading. I'm hopeful for two more years to continue the good work that has been started, to keep improving our processes and our outcomes, and yes, make Aspen better. I recognize that we have opportunity for improvement, and I want to work with you and work for Aspen for our best results. I'm honored to participate in this campaign for mayor. I ask for your support and your vote in the upcoming election. I'm seeking a final term as mayor to continue working for Aspen on the issues that impact our community. Some of my priorities for next term are maintaining our quality of life and a livable, affordable, thriving community, improving our housing program and inventory. We have great expectations for improving APCHA. I want to support local business opportunity from the workers at our restaurants to the owners of those restaurants, from the teachers of our children to the professionals in so many different business sectors. Community, family, kids, teens, support. We can measure our success, like I said, as a community, how we raise our kids and what environment we raise our kids in. I want to make development improvements. I want to make for a better process and product for Aspen. And of course, environmental protection and progress is high on the list. I want to remind everybody that we're getting together at Michola after this, so if you're at home, come on down. I ask for your vote for two more years. We've, we've done a great job of turning the ship. Let's keep working towards a better Aspen. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you both for your time and your commitment to the community, your thoughtfulness in your responses tonight. That wraps up our Aspen Mayor Forum and our 2023 Aspen Squirm Night. Thanks all for tuning in. And thanks to Grassroots and Aspen First House.
Alrighty, thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.